We're gonna start at the top of my screen at least with Mr. Katniss and you correct me if I'm pronouncing that incorrectly.
Okay, okay, well, thank you, everyone. Good morning. I am William Katsanis, kind of a soft key Katsanis. I'm running for city council to promote fiscal responsibility, accountability and transparency, to provide fiscal oversight and leadership and to genuinely engage residents as we address the city's problems, define our priorities, make difficult decisions and chart a sustainable future. I am a pragmatic, fiscally responsible Democrat with values firmly rooted in social, economic and environmental justice. I have absolutely no political aspirations other than to serve El Cerrito and promote good governance. I'm not looking for a political launching pad or stepping stone. I understand finance and I care deeply about our community. I have 15 years' experience working in affordable housing, community development and municipal finance. For over a decade, I've taught finance, financial ethics and economics at the University of San Francisco. I served three years on El Cerrito's Financial Advisory Board. I earned an MBA at UC Berkeley and also have a master's in financial analysis, master's in public administration and bachelor's in economics. I'm a former Peace Corps volunteer, nonprofit director, school teacher and principal. My Peace Corps service was in Thailand where I lived seven years before moving to 10 grad school at UC Berkeley 24 years ago. I've lived in the El Cerrito area ever since, for the last six years in the hills near Cunningham, Arlington. I am the adopted child of two teachers and the parent of an adopted child. As a single gay dad, I adopted my now young adult son when he was an infant and I was volunteering in an orphanage in Thailand caring for babies orphaned by HIV AIDS. I became concerned about El Cerrito five years ago when the California State Auditor identified cities most at risk of bankruptcy. Among all cities in California, El Cerrito ranks sixth from the bottom in financial health. And we have made improvements. The last ranking, we were 13th from the bottom out of 483 incorporated cities, obviously not good enough. In 18 of the last 21 years, El Cerrito has had budget deficits, including last year. In fiscal year ending 2024, which ended in June, the budget deficit was 6.85 million. El Cerrito owes nearly $90 million in unfunded pension liabilities to the retirement accounts of our police officers, firefighters, maintenance workers and other city employees. And be clear, when I say El Cerrito owes, what I'm saying is we owe you and I, the taxpayers. At the same time, we have genuine needs for a new library, police station, senior center and significant upgrades to our city's infrastructure, including the community center. But very importantly, and this goes to the heart of why I'm running for city council, we need to get our financial house in order first before we borrow money, before we go to voters with bond measures and property tax increases. Having our finances finances in order will go far towards buildings people's rebuilding people's trust, rebuilding people's trust in the city, trust that's been lost by years of financial mismanagement. Thank you for giving this time and hopefully to your vote and I would be honored to serve on the city council, on your city council.
Thank you. Going next to Mrs. Saltzman.
Thank you for inviting me here today. My name is Rebecca Saltzman. I've served as your BART director for the past 12 years and now I'm very excited to run for city council. Running for the El Cerrito City Council because of all that I've learned on the BART board and in my advocacy at Bikie Bay and the California League of Conservation Voters have prepared me to serve my city well. My vision is in El Cerrito where everyone can thrive, everyone feels safe and everyone knows their city is doing its part to address the many challenges we face from the housing affordability crisis to the climate crisis. As a council member, I will provide fiscal oversight to the city budget to preserve the services and staff that make El Cerrito such a great place to live. This is sorely needed as the city was in financial crisis just four years ago. The current council has done important work to get the city on stronger financial footing, but we can't let our guard down. I will help create new homes for people of all incomes and backgrounds and I've already been doing this. As a BART director, I've led on bringing 743 homes to the El Cerrito BART station with nearly half of them being affordable. I'm an environmental champion and as a council member, I will help create a San Pablo Avenue where it is easy and safe to bike, walk and take transit. A San Pablo Avenue that revitalizes our community and our local businesses. I'm a proven leader. As a BART director, I helped modernize the El Cerrito del Norte BART station and transform BART into one of the largest housing creators in the region. I made BART more equitable by passing a 50% discount for low income riders. And I've improved safety at BART by spearheading the BART Police Department's award-winning Progressive Policing Bureau, which has added unarmed ambassadors as crisis intervention specialists to help people in crisis. I know how to secure resources for government agencies, how to build and grow coalitions and how to manage organizations, large and small, from multi-county government agencies to national issue-based nonprofit organizations. I'm proud to be supported by dozens of elected officials and organizations, including the Democratic Party, the Sierra Club, the Contra Costa Labor Council, the Contra Costa Building and Construction Trades Council, state Senator Nancy Skinner, Assembly Member Buffy Wicks, County Supervisor John Joya and the entire current El Cerrito City Council and many, many more. And I hope to earn your support today and the support of El Cerrito voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mrs. Helian.
It's Helian, like helium. Hello, I'm Courtney Helian. My focus for El Cerrito includes making our neighborhood safer and sustainable for everyone. I will improve bicycle and pedestrian safety and better prepare the city for emergencies. In addition to public safety, I will focus on housing policies that encourage El Cerrito's unique character. This means working to combat housing insecurity and displacement and representing the interests of fellow renters. No matter what, I will communicate with my neighbors about what I am doing on their behalf, making city business transparent and accessible. I show up, I work hard, I meet deadlines, I ask questions and I understand the responsibility of making decisions for the benefit of the community. I believe in being a good neighbor and that being good neighbors means taking care of one another. My experience has prepared me to work for all El Cerritos. I have experience managing a city commission's budget and I have made responsible fiscal decisions while still meeting the needs of our residents. I saw firsthand the work and hard decisions that city council and city hall made to address El Cerrito's financial crisis. The work is ongoing, but it is also time to look forward. For the last five years, I have been on El Cerrito's Arts and Culture Commission. We proudly launched the Utility Box Program and the brand new Pave Streets Pilot Program. We funded music through grants to the Free Folk Festival and the One World Fourth of July Festival. We supported five artists and residents and two poet laureates. Two years ago, my fellow commissioners chose me as chair and I managed a budget, worked within city government and collaborated with the city council, the library and the Parks Department. I am proud of the work we have done to ensure that the budget can sustain long-term initiatives while supporting current projects through community-driven mini-grants. I have experienced and organized labor and we use it as a council member. I served as the head shop steward for SEIU 10 to 1 at the Asian Art Museum in San Francisco. I represented my colleagues in a tough contract renegotiation and advocated for the membership through dogged bargaining with management. I'm a lifelong Democrat and a volunteer in my time registering voters and sending letters to battleground states. As an art conservator, I am a steward of family, local and national histories. I treat treasured irreplaceable objects with care and respect. I'm a lifelong learner, I am adaptable and I strive to keep an open mind. While my career is important to me, El Cerrito is my home and my focus and I hope for your support as I continue to work to improve it. I am proud to during the endorsements of former mayor Greg Lyman, former mayor and current council member Lisa Motiyama, the Contra Costa Young Democrats, the Contra Costa Labor Council, the Contra Costa Building and Construction Trades Council and my stepkids' mother. Thank you for considering me.
Thank you. Last but not least, Mrs. Motiyama.
Great. Thank you. And good morning. My name is Lisa Motiyama. I am currently serving as the El Cerrito Council Member and I served as mayor last year. It has been a great honor to serve and represent El Cerrito and has been one of the best experiences of my life. I'm running for El Cerrito City Council for a second term because of all the work that we have done to make El Cerrito better. Financially, we have worked these past four years very hard to address all the concerns that the state auditor brought to us about the budget. Through endless hours of meetings, questions, changes, we've been able to dig down into our budget to reveal the questions that were not answered before so that we can have a transparent budget process. I'm very proud to say that when I started back in 2020, our budget fund balance was minus $110,000. And contrary to some popular belief, we do have a budget fund balance of now $16 million. And once our books are closed this year, we expect to have significantly more. So we are in a very solid budget position and my work in the next four years will be to keep that going and so that we do never have to go back to those hard times and problems of having a budget that was not closely scrutinized. So my vision for El Cerrito for the next four years is to make it better financially, make it greener and keep it much safer. So in those kinds of work, I expect to continue to make the budget process more transparent. One of the things I've done in the past is to start that process much earlier so that we can get greater input from the community. Also, to make it greener, I have pushed very hard and now we've made that transition to renewable diesel for all our heavy vehicles. That means our trucks, our fire engines, all the heavy vehicles, our garbage trucks, so that we are going to achieve our net zero carbon emissions by 2045 as our climate action and adaptation plan has put forth. I also want to make sure that we stay safer and that has been, I have lobbied with our state, OES, Cal Fire, our state assembly person, our state senator to request grants so that we can address our high fire danger and our hillside natural area. We have passed the, we have gotten a grant for the hillside natural, sorry, hillside natural vegetation management plan and that we will be implementing that going forward. So I request your support. I realize I've talked too long, but I really would like your support. Thank you.
Thank you all for those great introductions. Mrs. Motiyama, we're gonna write, gonna start with you and gonna go in reverse order. The city seniors have lost many programs and no longer have a dedicated senior center. How would you restore a dedicated senior center with comprehensive senior services? Each candidate will have two minutes to respond to each of the questions. Thank you.
So that is, you know, we did have a senior center to the pandemic. We had some issues and we lost that space, but it was not a long-term space. It was the Midtown Activity Center. So we had a time of transition where before we did have a senior center owned by the school district and that was taken away from us, but we have maintained robust senior programs at the community center. Before this transition, we had a lot of discussion in our community about senior services. Many people wanted to have them called adult services. So even though we don't have a dedicated senior center, we have been utilizing our community center. We've restored hours, sort of lounge hours for community and gathering and those services will occur at the community center. We also have senior programs at the Chris, uh, Christ Lutheran Church at the St. John's Center and we also have sakura kai for seniors that speak Japanese. So we do have robust services and we intend to continue them. We have programs through the West Contra Costa Unified School District, which are very critical. And, you know, we have programs throughout the community, so we continue to fund those. I think it would be great to have a senior center. We have a lot of priorities and a lot of deferred maintenance that we need to address first. And that's tough, but we need to take care of the buildings that we have. We have plans for a new library that will also be a serve as a, as a gathering place, including for seniors, that will be a refuge for cooling on hot days and warming for very cold days. And so we're creating infrastructure that serves everyone and I think that's an important part of what the city will do. It's not just seniors, but everyone that needs to be served and we try to do that in an equitable way. So that is, we have robust senior programs. We would like more programs. As, you know, the interests develop, we will provide those programs.
Thank you. Same question to Mrs. Helian.
Um, hi. So I was fortunate to grow up in a multi-generational household. We had my grandparents, my parents and my sister and I. And it was very wonderful to kind of see my grandmother's social group and to see how she was, she had places to go outside of our house, but then she also had contact with the younger generation. So while I understand the desire to have a designated senior center just for seniors and I do think that that is a wonderful long-term plan. I think in the interim, how we've been able to designate spaces and times for seniors while also having multi-generational contact, I think is really important. I think when, I think the fact that we're able to come together as a community and be together as a community, that's when synergy happened, that's when communications happened, that's where idea happens. I'm a member of a knitting group and our oldest member is 90. I'm the youngest member, I'm 40. We've met at her senior living center, we've met at various houses. So I think my fear sometimes is that seniors feel like they're being forgotten about and I feel like a senior center can, it can, it can function in two ways. I think in some ways, senior centers are sometimes huge as a place to put older people where they can be forgotten about. In other communities, senior centers are robust and they are a huge part of the community. And what I love about the library plan, what I love about the community plan is we're still prioritizing our seniors. We're still taking care of our seniors, but we're still valuing them and we're still treating everyone as equal members of the community. So yes, I do think there is a need for more senior programming. I do think there is a need for designated space. But my hope would be it would be in the context where we can all come together, where there can also be a communal and a joint space. Thank you.
Mrs. Saltzman, same question.
Thank you. This is a very important topic and I agree with a lot of what's been said so far. A new senior center will take significant time and money. It's an important goal for the future. And while we can keep our eyes on that future goal, it's important to, you know, make sure we have services now. And I think what the city has been doing is fantastic. And I know they've done some more, just this summer opened, you know, the kind of more drop-in time at the community center, which I know that was something people have really been asking for, like you have these classes, these programs, but we want more informal drop-in time and the city listened. And I think that's really important to do with all of the city services, listen to the residents, what they think is important and to adapt when we can and make sure that the programming is appropriate. So right now, it's important to focus on these services while we think about a senior center in the future. And then just considering the mobility challenges that some seniors have and the lack of bus service in fortunately a lot of El Cerrito. I think having these distributed services at different locations is actually a plus. So even if we get to the point when we have a senior center, that doesn't mean we can stop programming at other places because not everybody can get to them. I actually was just going door to door the other night, talked to a senior. The furthest he can get are to what's happening at the community's center and at the Lutheran church and really can't go any further than that. So if we built a senior center out of that range, he wouldn't actually be able to take part of it, even though he thinks it's important. And then finally, I want to agree with Courtney about the multi-generational activities, which I think are happening in the city. Just last weekend, there was the fantastic grandparents' day event, which I know the city didn't put on, but it was really great. My daughter went to it and enjoyed it and there was the jazz storytime event at the library. So there's a lot of opportunities to provide services for our seniors.
Thank you. Mr. Katsanis.
Thank you. We're gonna do a lot of agreeing with each other tonight, this afternoon, sorry. But on this issue, I do disagree. I absolutely feel like El Cerrito, I know El Cerrito needs a dedicated senior center. It is an absolute disgrace that we do not have one. We've had one for many years and twice lost it. It's not been prioritized by the city. There are scattered programs, they, I take exception, they are not robust. I am part of a committee with seniors, helping to bring back senior services and a senior center, center in El Cerrito. This is deeply personal to me. My, my mother was, I call her a refugee. She grew up in New Orleans, Louisiana, lived in New Orleans, Louisiana and came to California after Hurricane Katrina, newly diagnosed with cancer. She started her life over, alone, depressed in a place that she did not want to be. And literally the Albany Senior Center saved her life. She found community. It was a center of psychological, physical health for her. She had resources, she had activities, activities, she had social engagement. She had social interaction. It let her rebuild her life. And I, I've seen this and heard this story from other people. Senior services are essential for people as they age, maintaining their connections to communities, retaining their connection to each other. There are many opportunities to have a senior center in El Cerrito. We've just bought a church next to the police building. It'll be quite a while before it becomes part of the public safety building. It could immediately become a senior center. If we're gonna move the library, the old library could be a senior center. There is a veterans building across from the library that's largely empty right now. We've been meeting there as a community group to advocate for a senior center. It can be a senior center. This is extremely important. It is one of the most important issues facing El Cerrito. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, we're gonna start with Mrs. Helian. There have been significant criticisms voiced over the city's plan to rebuild the library. Citizens have questioned the long-term lease agreement rather than ownership of the land and building at an inconvenient location with adequate, without adequate parking. Please address these concern, criticisms and are they valid?
I'm sorry, there is a lot to that question. You please just repeat it real quick.
Yeah, absolutely. So there have been significant criticisms voiced over the city's plan to rebuild the library. Citizens have questioned the long-term lease agreement rather than ownership of the land and building and an inconvenient location without adequate parking. Please address these criticisms and are they valid? I didn't write these questions either.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's a multi, it's a multi-pronged.
You, you, you take, take what piece you feel like you can, you know, respond to.
So I do feel like I, I am one of those lucky people that lives around the corner from the library. My kids walk there, I walk there. It's very close and we're very lucky to have that access. I, but again, we're on foot, so we don't have to worry about cars. I personally am very excited about a new library for El Cerrito. For me, libraries aren't just places where you get books, but they're also places where community can come together. Like often like a library is a safe space, like they, a lot of the people there are trained to deal with domestic violence. They're trained to look for things like human trafficking. They're trained to like help our homeless. They are safe places where say like if a family is going through a divorce and you're figuring out, you know, custody, like they're a safe space to take your children. So they're, they're not just these repositories for books. They are community building centers. And our current library, you know, they've been able to do a lot with what little they have, but it is a dated building. It is not meeting the needs of the community from a space standpoint. They're limited in the size of the collection, they're limited in the activities, they're limited in the amount of people that can actually go to the library. I know that there have been also some questions about accessibility just in regard to hours of the library because it's not open as much as we would like. So I do think us having a new, more robust library, having it also kind of double as a meeting space, I think it will be better served to meet the needs of our community. And with it at the BART station, there will be parking, but then there's also accessibility through buses and BART. So I think just because, you know, the library has been a certain way for the last couple decades doesn't mean it needs to stay that way. And I think it's time to update, not just for the librarians, but also for the community. So I'm not sure if I answered the question, but that's how I feel about the library.
Thank you, Mrs. Saltzman. Let me, would you like me to repeat the long question?
No. Thank you. Um, so my family and I also really absolutely love our current library and we're there many times a week. And even though we love it, it's not the library we need. It's tiny. It's limited in the programming it can offer. I was just there last weekend for this jazz storytime. It was at capacity. Every time it has programs, it's at capacity. That's just not right. I recently was on a vacation up in the Guernville area. We checked out the Guernville Library, which is about the same size as the El Cerrito Library. Guernville's a city of 4,000 people. So clearly, we need a larger library. It's just not sufficient for what we need. And we also needed to be a modern library that can address the needs of the community. So we need separate spaces where kids can play and explore, where teens can do homework and learn, where adults and seniors can read and connect. And I think of it as an opportunity, as another space to provide senior services. It's gonna have, you know, a modern community room where we can do a lot of different programming that we're limited at the current spaces we have. I know during the summer, because I live near the community center, a lot of the programming there has to get shifted somewhere else because there are camps there and we're like constantly shifting things around because we just don't have all the community spaces we need. The library is an opportunity for that. It is not just for books. And then I can very much speak to the, the location. The El Cerrito Plaza BART Development is an incredible opportunity. The land, the lease is essentially free, $1. We're not gonna find cheaper space than that and it's a nice, we're not talking about a year-to-year lease, five years, something like that. It's not a risky proposal. And it's at a BART station, which is one of the few places you can take a bus to in El Cerrito. All the bus lines meet there and it's gonna be surrounded by homes and across the street from El Cerrito's retail hub. So people can link trips and do a lot of things at once. So I think it's a fantastic opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Katsanis.
Yeah, thank you. I use the El Cerrito Stockton Avenue Library and I know it's many shortcomings. I absolutely agree that we need a new library. I also share community concerns about cost and the lack of parking and particularly the lack of community engagement in the trend and transparency in the process that we've gone through with the city pushing so hard for the library to be in the BART station. Quite frankly, we don't have enough information. Maybe the city's correct. Maybe, maybe a new $21 million library in El Cerrito Plaza BART Station nestled among 743 apartments and reduced parking. Maybe that's a good idea. Maybe it's the best option. Maybe the BART complex is destined to become the heart of the city. I don't know. It's not yet. Maybe it will be. Maybe a $300 per year permanent tax increase to pay for the library is necessary and wise. I don't know. I haven't seen the finances. I haven't seen the plan and I've asked. Maybe the BART Center, BART Plaza Center is the desired first choice by residents. We've been told that it is, but we haven't seen the data, we haven't seen the surveys, we haven't seen the questions that were asked of residents. We don't know. Maybe the BART location is the least expensive option. Again, we don't have enough data. You know, unfortunately, there's no way of knowing without greater transparency and greater community input. What we've seen are one-way marketing shows where the library's been pushed and pushed and pushed and the community has not been, and not had their concerns addressed. We, we need absolutely to consider all possibilities and all financing options. And we need to do it in a way that's transparent and genuinely in Greek ages to community and carefully listens to people's ideas, honestly address their concerns and then allow us to arrive at an educated, informed choice. We're not there yet. We were having a, you know, one option pushed, pushed upon us, which may be the best option. I don't know. We just haven't gotten the information to make that determination. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, this is Yoda Motoyama. Please give us your response.
Hey, thank you. I do, what, you know, it's really nice to go last. There are many things that I agree with Courtney and Rebecca about why this library is a good idea. So I won't go into that. You know, I have a 30-year background in affordable housing development and so I understand the financing structure of what will happen at the BART station. You know, this BART station project has been many, many, many years in the making. If people remember in back in 2019, when the developer was selected, it was based on a request for proposals that had the library in it as an option. So this library concept is not something that the council just stuck in there and is pushing down people's throats. It is really kind of a longstanding effort by the city. It is really kind of a, a longstanding effort by the city to create this new library in a cost-effective way. So having a ninety-nine-year ground lease for a dollar from BART is the cheapest land option. When people were asked to support a library before, there was no specific site. It had to be bought. You know, it had to be built. So here at the El Cerrito Plaza BART Station, we have this opportunity to get a free piece of land and much of the construction of the library as part of a larger development, which also lowers the cost. I believe William said it was a twenty-one million dollar library. Yes, a freestanding library that you have to build on a piece of land that you have to purchase for that size of property will be millions, tens of millions of dollars more. So this is a cost-effective effort to get something that will be a really sho- uh, showplace for our community and a place to gather. I think the whole development will bring lots of additional investment. We've just got thirty-nine million dollars for the first part of the development that includes transit improvements and bike and pedestrian improvements. We've got twenty million dollars for infrastructure improvements there. So we are leveraging a lot of public dollars into making something really special for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next question, we're gonna start, excuse me, with Mrs. Saltzman. This is another three-part question. We're gonna say, uh, we're gonna start with, where do you stand on Measure G? The city refused to release the cross tabs on the Measure G survey. Do you support the release of all survey information? Do you support Measure G being a forever tax? Do you see any room for oversight improvement on the measure?
I think one word cut out, but I think I got most of what you said. Um, I do support Measure G. Um, if we do not extend this tax, and it's extending a tax, it's not a new tax. Taxpayers aren't gonna pay any more money. Um, the city will have to make significant cuts, um, as it did several years ago when it was in its financial crisis. Um, and those were painful cuts to make, and we, we don't wanna get into the cycle where we're having to make cuts every few years. So I think we need to stop that from happening. Um, and so I do support Measure G, um, because it's the way to maintain our city services, which are very important. I think we all agree on that. Um. I do, uh, understand the concerns of some citizens that not enough information was released. Um, and I, I have heard from some voters that I've been talking to, like, well, you know, the city is saying it polls better to make it, you know, go on until voters potentially repeal it, but we're not seeing the data that shows us that that's the case and that a ten-year, twenty-year, whatever. I can't remember the exact options, but that those polls were. So I don't really understand why the city isn't putting the information out there. I think in general, except for things that legally, you know, must be restricted information, we should share information with our citizens. We should be very transparent. Um, and we should ask, answer questions when they're asked, not just about Measure G, but about everything. You know, William brought up earlier about withholding some of the information, the financial information about the library for some time. I'm not sure why that was done. I, I would have liked to get that information out earlier. So yes, we need transparency on fiscal issues, really on all issues at the city. So I will be a champion of that, and I have been on the BART board. And also, we need to pass Measure G, or we will have severe cuts at the city.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Katsanis, uh, same question.
Thank you. Measure G is a continuation of Measure R. For those who don't know, it's a one percent sales tax, addition to the sales tax. Measure G would bring in about, as, as your has, about four million dollars a year. That's money that the city obviously needs. The problem with Measure G is that it's a sales tax. Sales taxes are the most inequitable taxes there are. They disproportionately hit the poor. And the short answer, why? Is that if you're poor, you spend all your money on consumer goods, and you basically pay taxes on them. If you're wealthy, you put aside money in savings account, trust funds, and investments, and you don't pay tax. You don't pay sales taxes on it. Um, the other problem with Measure G is that it's a forever tax. Measure R had termination dates. The predecessor of Measure R had termination date. Having a termination date, whether it's four years or eight years, or possibly twelve years, creates a system of accountability. If it's working well, if the residents are satisfied with it, they can vote on it again and it continues. Already, California has the highest sales tax in the country, and El Cerrito is the ninth highest in the state. It is essential funding, um, but it's the way it's been handled, the lack of transparency around it is disturbing. We've been told that residents prefer a tax that doesn't end, as opposed to one that doesn't. I found that very surprising. Mayor Lisa Rudnick, I'm sorry, Tessa Rudnick, in this last city council meeting, uh, asked the same question to a poller, and the poller did not answer it. She asked twice, and it was not answered. It's essential that the data be released. We spent thirty-six thousand dollars, I believe, or maybe it's thirty-four thousand, on this polling. The citizens have every right to know what the questions were, what the answers were, to see the cross tabs, as you said. That, that's absolutely essential. And that, that's happened over and over again in El Cerrito, where we've been told citizens prefer this. And that's, you know, trust and verify, okay? Maybe that's the case. Show us the data. Show us the evidence. And with Measure G, that's happening, and it's, it's unfortunate. I'm out of time, I see.
Didn't hear the music. Thank you, Mr. Katsanis. We're gonna go right to Mrs., um, Moriyama.
Okay. So I support Measure G. And it is a sales tax. So I think, uh, everyone I've spoken to in the community, when I've been able to answer questions and explain, I have not run into anyone that said, oh, let's get rid of that. So I think it's really important to understand exactly what it is. It is a sales tax. It's one cent on every dollar that we currently have in place. So I think if you, uh, pick and choose cities across the region, you can find places that have significantly lower sales tax. But kind of where we live, next Albany and Berkeley, El Cerrito, we're kind of like this sort of shopping cluster, right? We have the same levels of a sales tax. So, you know, I think when the sales tax measure R was first passed, people were concerned, oh, uh, everyone's gonna go shop somewhere else because our sales tax is high. That didn't happen. We know, I think we are very fortunate to have this one cent sales tax. I'm sure most people don't realize that we have a special dispensation from the state to get an additional half cent. If we forego this, we are not getting that back. So this is an important source of revenue. It is ten percent of our budget. If we don't have it renewed, we will have to cut programs and staffing for that ten percent. And I don't think that's what people want. So this tax is really important. The, the forever taxness of it is, it is an ongoing revenue source. Why wouldn't we want it to continue? It also costs us a lot of money to renew it, to go to the voters, to do this, you know? If there is a really strong feeling in the future and something changes in the economy, we don't need this tax anymore, it is by the voters. You know, a city council is elected. If there's a strong feeling about removing this, then people will come together and we can take it off. But this is an important revenue source. It is critical to our budget. I really support Measure G. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Helian. Same question.
So I will, oh yeah, so I'm gonna say that, um, I do support Measure G, and I'll get into why I support that. But I also, um, yeah, it is, it is concerning to me that there does not seem to be the transparency behind how some of the decisions are made. Um, yes, like what the questions were and how people answered. It does, it does kind of bring to mind, like, you know, what's happening behind the scenes, or like, what is one hand doing while the other hand is doing this? So I do think we kind of need to, we all need to be on the same page, and the only way we get on the same page is if we're all given the same information. And so that is something that is really important to me. Regarding Measure G, I'm sup, I support it. We're used to paying this tax. We, we, as far, as long as I've been here, it has been my experience to pay this tax while living in El Cerrito. It funds our city employees. It funds our services. When I first became a commissioner five years ago, it was before the financial crisis was really known. And while I was commissioner, I saw the layoffs happening. I saw the services being cut, and I saw the toll that that took on the morale of the employees at City Hall. I saw the morale that took on the residents of El Cerrito. And I've been a manager. I've had to let people go. I've had to fire people. It is a horrible experience, and, you know, you exhaust all other options before you get to that point. When you are affecting people's livelihoods, when you are making decisions that affect their quality of life, you should be exhausting every single option. And Measure G for me is non-committal. I support it. It keeps our city healthy. It gives us resources. It protects our residents. It also protects the people that show up every day to work for us in City Hall. Yes, it is our tax dollars at work. They're working for us. And I think we need to be supporting the residents and the people that make our city what it is.
Thank you. Next question, I believe we're gonna start with Mr. Katsanis. The city has refused to release its general fund balance, and it may be zero. The city is still being audited by the state auditor in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, had enormous budget, had an enor, had an enormous budget deficit. How will you address the budget deficit, and how will you improve fiscal transparency?
Yeah, this is a huge issue. This is largely, you know, my entry point into El Cerrito politics. I, five years ago, four, five years ago, I was very concerned about the hole that El Cerrito was in. And I was curious, so I started asking for the financials from the city. Over and over and over again, I was refused. I was told that it was in, it was in a proprietary computer system. It couldn't be released to me. I was told that it was given to the public. The public might try to manipulate it. I was told that no other city would provide me the financial data that I was requesting. I wrote to a hundred and ten cities, every city in the Bay Area, and the ten cities on the bottom of the financial audit report, all but three of them, one of them being El Cerrito, gave me exactly what I asked for. The same thing is happening now with the general fund. The city has proclaimed there's an unrestricted general fund balance of sixteen million. And they've changed the language, and so it's just general fund. We've tried to back into that number to see where that number is coming from. As best I can tell, nine million of that is in a restricted fund. It's not available to be used for anything other than restrictions that it has upon it. And other, other portions of the money have been sent already to, to CalPERS to pay down the unfunded pension liability, which is around to ninety million dollars. That, you know, I questioned that sixteen million. I don't know for sure that there's not sixteen million. I have asked, many people have asked, we'd like to see the data, and the data has not been provided. And that's a huge issue. Um, so the, the very first step towards restoring fi- fi- fiscal responsibility is to have transparency. If people want to see the data, it should be available. We need to know what's going on. If someone wants to look at the numbers and crunch the numbers and assess what's happening, you can't be told it's not in the public interest to see the financial data. And that's what's been said. It's been said it's in, it's a harm to the public to release the data, and that's absolutely wrong. Sorry.
Thank you. Are you? Okay, Mrs. uh, Moriyama, same question.
Okay, so I think that there's a lot of misinformation about the general fund balance, uh, that there's a deficit, that there's this unfunded liability that we're not paying. So part of it is the, you know, the general fund balance gets measured and finalized by our, uh, audit, which is called the ACFOR, which I apologize, can't remember what the acronym stands for. But, um, it is our city audit, and that is done after the, uh, fiscal year ends in June thirtieth. It is done by an auditor, and it tells us at that moment in time, on June thirtieth, what was our fund balance. And so that is the official fund balance. It does fluctuate. I don't know if some of you remember, there was a big controversy about us using a TRAN, which is a short-term loan, for, you know, making it through our cash flow problems, because cities get paid twice in a year when we receive property taxes in May and December. So we need to, like, bridge those times by, in the past, by borrowing money. But now we don't need to do that TRAN anymore. We don't need those short-term loans. We don't need to pay the interest and fees on that because we have a fund balance, and we use that and pay ourselves back when we get paid. That is a really prudent use of our fund balance, so that on any given day, that balance may not be sixteen million dollars, but that does not mean that we don't have the fund balance in total at the end of the year. So one of the things that we were able to do this year, because we have that fund balance, is pay our CalPERS liability, what we owe them for the year early. So by paying early in the year, we actually reduce that liability. You can pay it over time during the course of the year, but since we have the funds on hand, we did pay it. That does not mean we have a budget deficit. It means that we front loaded that cost. So we are doing well. We are doing great, and I encourage people to ask questions and come to council. Let us answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Helian. Same question.
Um, I also agree that, uh, it's important that the budget be transparent and that we understand what's actually happening within the city. Um, I've spoken to a few people at City Hall about how hard it is to navigate and find information on the El Cerrito website. And I've been a commissioner for five years, so I have a better understanding than a lot of the residents in El Cerrito. And I get frustrated trying to find information, so I can understand how frustrating it must be for members of the city that have been to a city council meeting, that haven't talked to a city council member, that haven't talked to commissioners, trying to figure that out. Um, I don't think it necessarily helps that everything is kind of approached um, as bad faith. I feel like a lot of the people or a lot of the situations or questions are coming up. It's always assuming the worst of city members and staff and city council, and I don't think that's the case. I think if you are going into situations looking for negativity, looking for people to blame, looking for people to attack, you're gonna find those people. So I do think there are ways to seek transparency and to have open dialogue in which people will be more receptive and less defensive. So I do think, yes, there needs to be transparency, but I also think that we need to remember at the end of the day that we all have the same goals. And that we do want the city to be financially healthy. We do wanna know what's going on. But what's that expression about attracting more flies with honey? Like, you have to treat people as people, and when you're constantly attacking, people are gonna shut down. And there are ways to have transparency and be respectful about it. There are ways to ask for information and be respectful about it. And you know, when people are able to meet halfway, that's when a lot more, that's when more change can happen. That's when compromise can happen. So it's a balance of people feeling heard, but also doing the work that needs to be done, I guess. I don't know. Sorry, ramble.
Totally fine. Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Saltzman, same question.
Thank you. Um, I have deep experience with budgets, both at the nonprofits I've worked at, and also at BART, where we have a substantially larger and more complex budget. Um, and I've done a lot to focus on our financial health at BART. Um, I wrote a policy many years ago that ensured that in up years, we were making larger contributions to our reserves, which BART hadn't been doing for decades, and I wish had. Um, and we have not touched those reserves during the pandemic crisis. Instead, we brought in federal and state funds that we've really stretched by being very financially responsible, making cuts where we could, having hiring freeze. And those funds, which were only supposed to last a couple of years, are currently lasting and will last for a total of six years. So I know how to make funds work in a way that's responsible, and I know how to deal with really major budget crises. And at BART, we created, we also have big pension liabilities, just for people who don't follow pensions closely. Nearly every public agency in the Bay Area and the whole state has pension liabilities. I won't get too deep into it, but it has to do with decisions that CalPERS made decades ago, which were bad decisions. Um, but the pension liabilities aren't that we're behind on payments. It's that it gets stretched out over time. They have complex uh, calculations where they decide how much each city has to pay each year, and the city is keeping up with those. But at BART, we created a trust to pay for future pension liabilities, which I think was the right thing to do. And so there's ways to manage these future liabilities. I do agree, as I said in the last questions, we need more transparency. And honestly, even if people are approaching us negatively, you know what? That's our responsibility as the leaders of the city. We need to be responsive, even if folks are negative and have a lot of experience with that at BART. Even if they're negative, it doesn't mean that they're not right or don't have legitimate questions, so we have to be ready to answer them.
Okay. Thank you, candidates. We're gonna go into our final question, and then we'll all have our two-minute closing. Uh, what is the single most important issue facing El Cerrito? Uh what is the single most important issue facing El Cerrito? And let's start with uh Mr. Katsanis and we'll work our way down.
Okay. Thank you. And as you might imagine, I would say I think the most important issue facing El Cerrito are its finances. And I lump them together, financial responsibility, accountability and transparency. I think that with that goes an issue of trust. There are a lot of grand plans for El Cerrito and I support most of them. I think it's great that we have a new library. I think it's great that we upgrade the senior or have a new senior center. I think it's great that we improve the infrastructure in the city, but all of that costs money. And it involves going to the residents and saying, will you fund this? Will you pass a bond measure? Will you increase your property taxes? And that's not gonna happen unless people trust the city. And part of trusting the city and being able to trust the city is seeing that the the finances are in order. We need to, you know, that that is absolutely first. You know, nothing else is possible unless El Cerrito is fiscally solvent, unless the unpunched unfunded pension liabilities, which are growing, are paid down in which we don't have budget deficit after budget deficit, which we have this year, six point eight five million dollars. And you know, it's just, that's that's it. I my campaign is is based on a concern about the city's finances. And without that, without the financial house in order, hardly anything else is possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Saltzman. Same question.
I actually agree that the most important issue is finances, but we talked about that a lot. And I'm shocked that the biggest problem in the Bay Area hasn't come up, which is housing. So I'm gonna talk about that. Um housing is something we need to address. Just in the past five years, the price of housing in El Cerrito has skyrocketed. Um and families are being priced out and seniors are being priced out. So this is something I've focused on as a BART director, you know, writing our transit oriented development policy and affordable housing policy and bringing seven hundred and forty-three homes to El Cerrito Plaza BART Station. And as Councilmember Motayama mentioned, the project recently secured thirty-nine million dollars in state funding for the first first seventy affordable units and for access improvements there, which means that that probably break ground soon and bring desperately needed units to El Cerrito. Um BART is also soon planning to start development at the El Cerrito del Norte BART Station. And I look forward to being on the city side of that, partnering with BART to bring more homes and especially affordable homes to the north side of town. And we need to do more in the neighborhoods too. Um as I've been walking and talking to voters, I've heard from folks who want to build accessory dwelling units at their homes. They wanna turn their homes into duplexes or triplexes. They're now one person living in large homes and they don't want that to be, but they can't afford to move. And because of all the barriers, they can't afford to turn their house into a duplex or triplex. So we have to, I know barriers, some barriers have gone away, but we have to do more. Um I do wanna applaud what the city's done so far with the San Pablo Plan, but we still have to do more on housing. We haven't done enough yet, so that will be a big focus on mine besides also focusing on the city finances.
Thank you, Mrs. Healy.
Um I agree that I think the getting the city's finances in order and transparency is very important. I'm I'm a renter. You know, my husband and I, we are middle class, upper middle class, two working professionals. We can't afford to buy a city or buy a home in El Cerrito. Um we have decided to stay in El Cerrito. We looked at other cities in the area. And we chose to be long-term renters here because we value our community. We are committed to our community and I think that we really do need to be able, we need to be looking at affordable housing. We need to be looking at policies that encourage the socioeconomic diversity of El Cerrito. And we need to be looking at affordability of houses, not just for renters and landlords, but also homeowners. I mean, so many of my friends do own their homes. They're losing their fire insurance. So we need to be doing things to make our neighborhood safer in the event of a national disaster. I mean, we're all in this together. I mean, we want to stay in El Cerrito. We need to find ways to stay in El Cerrito and we just, we need to have more affordable housing. We need to have fire abatement. We need to be more financially transparent as a city. We need to also be working with the community at large because El Cerrito, we kind of get lost with Berkeley and Richmond and Oakland. We're kind of this small city, but we're we're part of a much bigger Bay Area and I think sometimes we forget about that. So we really need to be collaborating with the other communities around us. So that's that's all I got for that one.
Thank you. Great response. Uh Mrs. Moriyama.
Okay, so I think everybody touched on all the things that are really important and critical in El Cerrito. I would say that my top two things are the finances of the city and affordable housing and homelessness. The budget situation is moving from crisis mode. We were in crisis mode. And now we're fortunately in a place where we have fund balance. We can stop trying to panic re- respond to the auditor and scramble. But now we have a moment where we need to stop and do the really unsexy work of looking at our maintenance. You know, do we, we don't have a reserve for repairing our existing buildings. They need a lot of work. We always react as if it's an emergency, but we know the roofs are bad. We know heating systems fail. So there's a lot of unsexy work uh that goes into that. We are working on procurement where, you know, departments are just buying stuff on their own from wherever. But we really need to bring that in and really streamline that so that we get the best deal and the greenest deal. So what we have procurement guidelines for, you know, recycled products or less buying if we don't need it. So looking at the budget from that perspective of going towards long-term sustainability and making it really stable. I think one of the issues of having a sixteen billion, sixteen million dollar plus fund balance is that it's really easy for people to look at and say, hey, you know, you got sixty million dollars that, why don't you turn that church into a senior center? It is in fairly bad shape, so it would take almost all of our fund balance to make it into a a stellar building. So we have to make choices, but those funds, that fund balance is our fund balance. That is our working capital. We don't use it up. We need to save it. Thank you. Sorry, talk too long.
Totally fine. We're gonna go right back to you, Ms. Moriyama, for our closing statements. You have two minutes.
So, thank you. I'm running for city council for another four years so that we can maintain our progress in making our city better. I have worked really hard to support making our budget better, supporting local businesses, supporting community events, supporting affordable housing, getting the pro housing designation for our city that opened up funding and additional grants. I've worked hard to lobby at the state level to get more funding. I have served on the A-BAG Executive Board, the East Bay Economic Development Alliance to bring El Cerrito to tables where we haven't been before. And I hope that I can have your support and moving us forward for the next four years in a positive way. I really, really love being your councilperson and representing you. I love working hard for you. I love that my community is full of people that are working to make our community better in all different ways, from the arts to gardens, to activities, sports, Sundar Shadi display, all kinds of ways that are not necessarily within the city, but part of the city. And that is what the richness of El Cerrito is all about. I want to be a positive presence and a strong president presence to move the city forward. I am endorsed by the El Cerrito Democratic Club, the West County Democrats, the Democratic Party, the Sierra Club, the Contra Costa Labor Council, the Building and Trades Council, and my family, my dog and two cats. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Healy. Closing statement.
Um um I've worn many hats in my life, um a manager, an employee, a shop steward, a negotiator, a commissioner, an artist, a conservator, teacher, student, stepmother, wife, daughter and friend. And I really hope that I can add city council to that list. I will continue to build community regardless of the election outcome. During COVID, I created a safe space for stepparents to seek support as we navigated new family challenges and dynamics. I ensured that my fellow stepmamalas and stepoplas felt safe. And we established guidelines to protect ours and our family's privacy. Uh during that time, my backyard also became a safe space for our children and their friends to attend Zoom school while social distancing. Um I've been a long-term member of my book club since February twenty twenty-two and we supported each other as small business owners, new mothers, social workers, educators and healthcare professionals. I love El Cerrito. I'm committed to making our streets and neighborhoods safer, keeping our homes affordable and protecting our green spaces. I'm committed to enacting and supporting policies that celebrate and encourage our city's diversity. I promise to continue the hard work our current city council is doing to ensure the city's long-term financial health. And you know, as a stepmother, as a shop steward, I have experience making choices that are good for people, but maybe not being liked while doing it. So you know, sometimes people just don't like me and that's okay. Um I am honored to be endorsed by um Greg Lyman, Lisa Motayama, the Contra Costa Young Democrats, the Contra Costa Labor Council, the Building and Construction Trades Council. And again, my stepkids' mom and her parents too. So thank you for considering me and I hope to win your vote. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Healy. Mrs. Saltzman, closing statement.
Thanks so much for inviting me to be part of this forum. Serene on the BART board for the past twelve years has been a tremendous honor and I'm ready to make an even bigger impact on El Cerrito. My family and I love this city. My daughter started TK at a public school last month and we plan to keep her in El Cerrito Public Schools throughout her education. My wife and I take our daughter to the swim center and the library and we enjoy walking along the Aloney Greenway and hiking through the hillside natural area. And I want El Cerrito to be the best it possibly can be. I know how government works at the local, regional, state and federal levels and I will enter City Hall with a broad range of experience, expertise and connections that will help me bring out the best in El Cerrito. I know how to handle a crisis. Um I don't shy away from it and I will take on all of the issues that we've talked about today and many more. One we haven't touched on is fire safety, which is incredibly important to the city and we must do more to prevent a future tragedy. Um because of all of my experience um and what I have done, I'm supported by the Democratic Party, the Sierra Club, several Democratic Clubs, the Labor Council, the entire El Cerrito City Council and too many state and regional elected leaders and labor and community leaders to list here. Um but you can learn a lot more about my experience, my platform, my endorsements at Rebecca for ElCerrito dot com. And if you've been inspired today, you can also sign up to uh support me, put up a lawn sign, come out and volunteer. And if you're an El Cerritan, I will probably be knocking on your door in the coming weeks and months. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Katsanis. Close this up, closing statement.
Thank you, everyone, for this opportunity to discuss our city's future and thank you too to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. I received an endorsement questionnaire last week asking me to assess my opponents in the race. My answer was, I don't consider anyone here to be an opponent. There are four of us seeking three seats, but I'm sure all four of us will continue to work together as partners with each other, with the residents of El Cerrito, with city management and with the other council members, Gabe Quito, Carolyn Weisinger, who incidentally both have endorsed me. There are many good ideas and much agreement expressed today. I absolutely respect, appreciate and thank Lisa for the excellent she's worked, excellent excellent work she's done on the city council. I know that Rebecca and Courtney are fine people who also care deeply about El Cerrito and the same is certainly true for outgoing council members Paul Fadelli and Tessa Rudnick. What distinguishes me is the financial expertise and experience I bring with my care for the community. A friend once jokingly said that I'm a social worker with a calculator. As I said in my introduction, I'm a fiscally responsible Democrat. Unfortunately, the calculator is necessary. With reoccurring budget deficits, depleted reserves and unfunded pension liabilities, we have difficult decisions to make. We absolutely need to get our finances in order so that we can have a new library, a new senior center, a new police station, new fire trucks and infrastructure improvements. We had a, however, the, sorry. We had just a few minutes to introduce ourselves and just two minutes to answer each of very important questions. However, the issues impacting our city are complex and they don't lend themselves to two-minute answers. My website is full of detailed analysis. I invite you to go to WilliamforElCerrito dot com with the number four and read whatever written. If you have questions or you wanna talk more about what we can do to work together, please send me an email or give me a call. Please join me in demanding fiscal responsibility, accountability, transparency and providing oversight and leadership and genuinely engaging residents. Together, we can address the city's complex problems.
You should finish your statement, Mrs. Katsanis.
That's okay.
Okay, but all right. Thank you, guys, for um all being here with us this morning. Great conversation, great insights. Uh good luck to all of you and um yeah, again, thank you for being here.